Everybody ready? I guess we're ready. Good evening. Today is June 21st, 2018. This is Hyde Park Central School District's Board of Education meeting. At this time, I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to union negotiations and employee salary discussions.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Posed. Thank you. We are now in executive session.
Stay quiet to see you.
At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which this is one nation, united in the Constitution of which we are.
Tomorrow, we get to do that four times.
Four times.
Only two times today. There are no modifications to the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Right.
Posed. Thank you. Upcoming events. Oops, wait a minute. Let me click on it. Upcoming events. Tomorrow.
Hey, what's new?
Hmm? June 22nd. Not on here, but at 8:30 through 11:30 is the Haviland Middle School Moving Up Ceremonies at Haviland Middle School. And at 6:00 PM that night, tomorrow night, is the FDR Graduation Ceremony at the Oval Office, I can say even. The next Board of Education meeting is Tuesday, July 10th. It starts at 6:00 PM and is here in the district office. And it is the organizational meeting. Okay. That brings us to Pride. We always start with Leah. So let's see, you got any? Leah?
Um, well, the school year's over, so we've been enjoying Senior Week. We went to Six Flags on Monday, and that was a lot of fun, and the drive-in last night. And this morning, we had our senior breakfast and practiced walking in two lines.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah.
In the same direction.
Just like kindergarten.
Yes, in the same direction. We're not very good at it. And on Friday, the girls, four by eight, ran at Nationals. And on Saturday, Sarah Traynor ran the steeplechase and came in second. And Liam Farrell also ran the steeplechase.
That's great.
Cool.
I would like to report that Leah left the building today skipping. She didn't see me, even though I was waving at her. She got a side door behind the cafeteria.
Wait till she leaves this meeting. You think she was skipping?
She was skipping down the hall.
Sorry, Mr. Duffy.
When are we gonna do the presentation?
So we just had our retiree reception. So we had a number of retirees this year, and we started a few years ago of inviting retirees in. We still have them with us this evening. But an opportunity to just formally thank them and say goodbye and recognize them and have some cake and punch. And as we just explained, you know, we're a public entity, so we can't give out gifts, but we can publicly recognize them as well as have the opportunity to have a piece of cake and just chat with them for a little while. So it was a nice crew, and Lori Quilty's still here with us.
And they look happy.
And they do look happy.
They're all happy.
And yeah, the Moving Up Ceremonies this week were all wonderful. We had all the elementary Moving Up Ceremonies this week, so that was good. Sure.
We have a few other things to do, but we have to do it from the podium.
Right.
Let's do it. Yeah. Okay. At this time, we would like to recognize the participation and just generally a nice person who has been our student representative. She has set the bar extremely high. I told the young man that's coming in next year that he's in big trouble, but he seemed like he could handle it, though. But it won't be your smiling face, though. So if you could come up here, I have a little something, so if you can remember.
Thank you very much. This is Remember Us, by, and I hope you enjoy your college day. And I mean, I was impressed that your college of choice listed the board participation as an item that got you into the school, so that's really, that's really cool. So thank you again, and best of luck in the future.
Can we have a photo?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Very nice. Thank you.
And that brings us to our departing board member. So Steve, if you could come up. The, Steve and I had a short conversation. It's, as a board member, it's, it's hard to understand if you've made a difference or not. And sometimes you get, you know, like, I could've done something better, or did I really help the school? I personally believe that you accomplished a great deal. Technology-wise, paperless thing, board docs, negotiating teams, and I'd just like to thank you for everything you have. We have this plaque for you. Hopefully.
To me, with the other hand.
Yeah. Oh, oh. Come on out. You wanna take a picture? Go on, come on in.
Come on, take a picture. Take a picture.
We could do it two directions. It's fine. Me first. All right. No guarantee on this, because I'm not the tech guru. You are. So, but I think I got a few.
We can edit it. Anything can be edited.
Excellent.
Suitable for framing.
He's been set for it.
Two, two, two. No, I just wanted to also just say a word, not to linger too much, but Leah, it's been an absolute, absolute pleasure working with you. You were elected by your peers, and it very quickly became obvious why they elected you. You demonstrated leadership skills throughout, not only your time on the board, but thank you so much for your leadership skills on the district leadership team. You were instrumental in getting the word out to your peers, as well as to our community on the importance of our capital project. So you really were instrumental in mobilizing the student body on that front, so thank you. So thank you for your board service, and thank you for your district leadership team participation. And I am going to miss you. I've enjoyed the time that we've had together your senior year. We got to know each other a little. Really gonna miss you, so good luck.
Thank you.
Steve! So nine years is an awfully substantial amount of time to serve as a volunteer. And you were on the hiring committee when I was hired. I'm going into my ninth year. You were here for a year before I got here. And it's always something that you very much remember are the people that sat around the room and interviewed you and selected you to come and to serve as the superintendent of this community. So from that moment, through all your other leadership positions, whether it was the technology committee, all the various committees, you've been on the energy committee, you were instrumental. Your time as a board president, where, you know, you realized that it's a substantial amount of work. You just did an excellent job through and through. And I can genuinely say that as a board member, you were always focused, and every decision you made was based on what's good for kids and what's good for growth in the district. And it was always very balanced, well-thought-out. You always used all of your critical thinking skills. So thank you so much for your service, and I will personally miss you. Tracy's all yours. Amanda, put 'em to work! No, thank you so much.
I'd just like to say that I will be back to harass you all about the language program. I want updates in December, when I'm home from school.
Okay. Don't forget to put in your absentee ballot while you're away.
I'm just here for that, ready.
So would it surprise anyone to know that I have a few thoughts jotted down here in response? I appreciate the recognition. It's, it can be hard to accept. It's, all the decisions we make are as a group, so it's a little hard to single out any single person's contributions. And so, you know, having Doug say something like that is very meaningful. But I did want to say that in compensation for the many times that I've unapologetically asked too many questions, I'll try to keep this brief, at least under 10 minutes. So first and foremost, I have to recognize the most important single factor in any contributions I've made in my role as board trustee, my wife.
There you go.
She was instrumental. She convinced me that I would, I could be valuable here. And she supported my participation consistently. She specifically encouraged me to run, although she didn't pressure me. And she lent support when it was stressful, and there were those times. And she acted as sounding board for the larger decisions. It'd be impossible to name everyone who's been influential, but there are some specifics that I'd like to mention. The first are the, all of the employees in the district. I know that there are those who just treat it like a job, but I think the majority treat it as service. And I think that it's very clear. I'd like to, to talk about the importance of Kate Blossom, who was the principal at Hyde Park Elementary. She was the one that actually encouraged me to put in a letter and become a candidate, because I was selected by the remaining board to replace another person who had dropped off the board. And without her encouragement, it would've never even occurred to me. And I think that that's important, because I think it doesn't occur to a lot of really good people, unless somebody says, steps up and says, you know, I think you're well-suited for that, and you do a little convincing, it's not gonna happen. I have to recognize Carol Pickering. The first year I was on the board, six months certainly, I was here for roughly an hour a week, and she showed me around the district, told me what the forums were, explained laws to me, explained rules, explained negotiation. She recommended reading. I think her role was invaluable in terms of teaching me the ropes. Forrest Ador was a fantastic technology director, and he really showed how you can be involved in technology and still care about the people behind it. Aviva, Cora, Linda, your competence is unquestionable, and your decisions always involve your enormous breadth of knowledge. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna try to name names, because this group is too large, but the directors and the building administrators, they're all very competent and passionate about the work they do, and they care very much about the kids. And I think they should be very proud of the work they do and very proud of the district. From my fellow board members, special shout-out to Tim Liebrand and Glenn Watson. They're no longer here, and I doubt whether they're even gonna watch it on YouTube, but...
Come on, you're sitting home, waiting for the next episode to be available.
A lot of our best conversations were over fermented drinks after a board member or after a board meeting. And that, that really helped solidify a lot of my thoughts and ideas. We didn't always agree on everything, and so learning how to present my side of the argument, even over a beer, really helped later on when it mattered. Also wanted to mention Steve behind the camera, and Doug specifically. The first year I was on the board, we were in the basement of Violet Avenue refurbishing computers, along with Forrest Ador. It's my recollection, we refurbished around 20, and then later...
From parts.
Yeah, from spare parts.
Yep.
Put an operating system on there, assembled systems, and then had a couple of community days where we gave them away. I don't remember too many of the systems going out, but I do remember that we really gave it a, an effort to make a difference in the community. As well as everybody at the table currently. I really admire everybody here. I think it's a solid group. I think they've got their, their head screwed on straight, their priorities in order. So I'm entirely comfortable in leaving the board in your hands. Other people include Stu Waxman. Now, most of the community won't know Stu, but he's our attorney, specifically in charge of negotiations. And a huge role model. I've learned so much about composure under pressure and the value of preparation. I would hate to be across the table from him, because he wins every argument I've ever seen him make. And finally, Greer. I can't say how, how good I think Greer is. I think she's a great leader. She shows warmth and compassion, very methodical, but very passionate about her work. I think she's, you know, choosing to hire her was the single best decision I was involved in, in my time here. I'm gonna touch on a couple of my biggest concerns as I leave. One is board stability and leadership. The board thankfully has been very stable for the entire time that I've been here. Now, I'm not claiming that I did that personally. I'm just saying, watch it. So, and I think that has been one of the reasons why the, the district is on an upward curve. Stability of the board, the passion of the board, the attention to detail such as you can get at the board level. I am a little concerned about the fact that we, when I leave, we'll only have one person on the board who's ever been president, to my knowledge. Have you been president? So I think that you should try to make special plans to give other people some experience there. Now, having said that, I don't want anybody to take that as a condemnation of the work that Doug does. He does a fantastic job, and considering that we're getting that much work for free, it's a heck of a bargain. But he brings, he brings a lot of knowledge and warmth and passion for the work. So I can't actively advocate for replacing him, but without a good leader, without someone who's got some experience, I think that there could be some complications. The other concern I have is for security. I think that we've, the administration has put together a very good network, social network, so that the kids are all watching each other, caring for each other. I think the administration is keeping an eye on the kids, and they've got programs in place to make everybody feel supported and take away any motivation they might have to, to do bad things. I think there's good relationships with the police. I would prefer to see stronger physical barriers. I don't know what's possible, I'm not an expert, but that's my preference. And certainly, I've lost a lot of sleep over that particular issue. So I've, I've taken longer than I wanted to. For that, I'm not gonna apologize. I'm only gonna do this once. But in general, I feel comfortable leaving, in part because we do have a culture of respect and trust on the board, and I think that will continue. We do have financial stability. And while it may be hard for some to see, I think that the improvements via objective measures of the board are on the rise. Graduation rate is on an upward trend, and so are test scores, in my opinion. Considering the increases in the number and the size of the obstacles or rate against us, showing any improvement is success. Certainly, the, the things that took place while I was here that I am proudest of is the fact that we have a computer for every student. And obviously, a lot of other tech advancements. But now I feel like I can rest. And something that was unexpected is that I experienced great personal growth through this role. I learned to argue and debate without taking it personally. I learned to patiently wait and listen while somebody else finishes their argument. I learned to try to avoid assumptions about motivations. An important one that I'm still working on is I learned how to separate what people were saying from how they say it. I can, I learned that government can be good or bad, and I learned how to tell the difference. I also learned that government is easily, easily becomes very clumsy and heavy-handed, and the effort it takes to prevent that. No matter what, I can consider myself very lucky and very grateful for having served. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks, Steve. Well, anybody else got any other pride? I mean, what I can, yeah. Well said, Steve. Thank you. Thank you. This time, we're going to have the superintendent's report, an update on the capital project.
Yeah, just a mini, mini. Should I just push the button?
Yes.
The right-hand button. Yeah, this is just a tiny, tiny one, so you can anticipate early fall, as soon as we get back to school, with some more specifics. But we did, after the vote, we had our first kickoff meeting with everybody in the same room all at once. That's architects, engineers. Jason didn't join us for finance, because we didn't need him at that point. But at that meeting, we looked at who all the players were. We had some new engineers around the table for some very specific parts of the heating and ventilation. Elliot Sheldon, Elliot Garcia, Linda, myself, Rick Wirt for the technology. We brought in Jill for energy. So that was who was there on our end. And on their end were all the architects that will be working on the project and the engineers. We talked about when we would be needing some outside consultants. We talked about schedules. We talked about the budget and the, the pre-ref scope review, what we had done so far, and some development items and what the next steps would be. That was our agenda. There might be a person or two missing up there. Might be the whole list. Let's see. I'm not sure I see Rick Wirt up there, but he was there. Some of the consulting... Anything that may involve any, any civil projects, whether it's SHIPO for our historical things, just making sure we're on top of that, and anything where we need to seek any structural consultants. So we'll look at those as we go through. This is what I really wanted to share, what it's looking at like right now. So throughout this summer, they're going to do the schematic design, and then after that, the design development occurs. That's between August 9th and November 1st. They're anticipating then, you know, by November 1st, by January 10th, there's a submission to State Education Department, and then there's that big time lapse between January 10th and November 14th. We're hoping that between January 10th and November 14th, it goes through the SED approval queue. We base that on the amount of months that it's taking currently. We have heard from SED that they're working on it to speed up the process, but there's no hope that that will happen. So that's what that time lag looks like right now. That November 14th, we would go out for bids, and we'd be awarding contracts by January 2016, 2020. So that time lapse from SED is the killer time lapse. And we just wanted it out there so that people know that that's really what it's looking at. If you award bids in 2020, the first shovel hits the ground, you know, maybe that spring on some projects where they can start some work second shift, but for the most part, the summer of 2020 is the real construction phase. There is some talk of seeing if there's any value or any potential of taking the North Park project, and they're exploring that right now, taking the North Park project and trying to get that, just that piece expedited and phase that one in. There's pros and cons to that, but that was what we spoke about at the table, and they're going to get back to us. We will be meeting every other week throughout the summer. This coming Friday, not this one, not tomorrow, a week from tomorrow, they will be meeting with representatives from the science teachers and the administration at Haviland and FDR to do the real design work for the science labs. That's the showers, the sinks, the placement of the desks, the type of furniture, the type and location of all of the shelving, storage, everything. That's, that's where they can really roll up their sleeves and do the science lab design. So they're all getting together next Friday. And that's it. I just wanted to share publicly the timeline. Again, this fall, we'll have the architects come in to a board meeting, give us an update. My goal is to get them to share on a monthly basis where they are, what the progress is, so there's no surprises, and put them out in front of it. Say, what is it looking like? What are you facing? What are you hearing from State Ed once it's submitted? But really get an update on a monthly basis. But it was a good kickoff meeting, and it was great to have the whole team all together after the capital project was approved to say, okay, this is it. You know, the vote's in, let's roll up our sleeves. So we're looking forward to that. Questions?
Yeah, Greer, just one question. Was there any discussion about the third-party review of the, for SED?
Yeah, I think I mentioned that at the, the last board meeting.
Yeah, I wasn't here, unfortunately.
Oh, okay. We wanna investigate that. There's an option. The State Education Department realizes and recognizes that they're seriously behind, and that it's taking a long time to review these capital projects. And that can affect cost, because honestly, a year or two out, there are, a lot of unknowns can happen. So I've heard a couple of things. SED was actively advertising for engineers. So they are in the process of hiring more engineers for the review. That is... engineers for the review. That is their response to saying, you know, we know we're behind, so we know we need to add some staff. The other thing that they did last year was they are giving districts the opportunity to have what they call a third-party review for the approval process. So they went through the process of vetting certain architectural engineering companies to review capital projects, and at a cost to a district, if you wanted to go through the third-party review, you had the potential to get your project reviewed sooner. And this is what you were talking about.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, right now, what has happened is that the school districts that have gone for a third-party review, it has taken just as long to go through the third-party review, and then they spent money to do so. I was just talking to Joe Phelan, Aviva and I, superintendent from Rhinebeck, and they went for the third-party reviewer. They had signed up for the third-party review, and they were so backed up that they decided to pull out and not go the third-party review. Why spend extra money when it was going to take the same amount of time? The other thing that I shared with the board was that we have heard that some districts that went for the third-party review, so now you've spent extra money for an expedited process, the third party sends it back to State Ed, and State Ed says, eh, we want to look at it anyway. So unless we can, and I want to work with, I mentioned, I want to work with New York State School Boards to see if we could do a little campaign through school boards, and actually, if you want to take it to the Dutchess County School Boards, to do a little awareness campaign about the third-party review, that either you put in a fix such as a third-party review, and it really is a cost to the district but an expedited process, or you don't. Because I think it's very discouraging to spend extra money and not have an expedited process. So before we endeavor to go third-party route, I need to have a little bit more confidence that it will expedite the process. So we are going to explore it. We did discuss it at our last meeting. So we want to find out a little bit more about it. I also want to work with NISBA to see if they would like to shed a little light on this. I know they have in what's the school board doc paper, but I don't think enough. I don't think... On board.
On board.
So we discussed it, but we discussed that right now, there are too many unknowns and more negatives coming out of third-party review than positives. If we start to see that an expedited process is really that, so for example, North Park would be perfect. If we could come back to the board this fall and say, we want to do an expedited review with the third party for North Park, and we could put a shovel in the ground next summer instead of 2020, that might be worthwhile. So we are exploring that. That was a long answer, but you missed what I said.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Greer.
Keep you posted.
That brings us to statewide universal pre-K data.
Okay. So we added, I added this item to the agenda kind of late in the day because at a recent board meeting, one of you asked about, what about the pre-K data? How do we know how they're doing? And so I looked at it, and it was really great. So I'm sharing it with you. Hopefully, I would have shared it with you even if it wasn't. But it's actually really impressive. So it's not this one, it's this one. All right. So what this shows is the students who are in kindergarten in 2016, 17, this was the first group who had been in pre-K because we had the program for the first time in 15, 16. So what you're looking at is the beginning of the year. So they had been in, you know, this group that you see in the orange, they had been in our UPK program in Hyde Park the previous year, and then they came into kindergarten, and you can see that they're ahead in reading and math by half a semester when they came in, as compared to the whole general population in the district. So many of the students in blue also went to preschool. So it isn't even about who went to preschool and who didn't go to preschool. It's just a straight look at people who were in the UPK program and then compared to the overall population. So that first year, they were ahead by half semester, which is, you know, roughly 10 weeks. And then, this is in first grade. So this is the following year. So we're following them. So this was a whole year later, and they are a full semester ahead in reading and in math. This is grade one. So this is first grade. And then here, we have in second grade, still a full semester ahead in reading and math. So we plan to keep tracking. And we use the MAPS data because that's the only standardized measure we have in K2. So we're certainly going to also look at, you know, third, fourth, fifth grade ELA in math as we go up. So we're just going to keep charting the groups of students as they come through. We have received our allocation for next year. As many people have heard, we are continuing with both programs, four classes of children at HPE through Abilities First, and then also through the Archdiocese. So I wanted to let you know. And we can keep on sharing that data with you.
So good.
Yeah, and of course, anecdotally, teachers talk about how much better kids are prepared just to come into the classroom and know how to walk in a hallway, and sit in a chair, and sit in a circle, and be with other kids in a classroom. So.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Aviva, can you just explain, what is the scale going up the rise, 168 through 184? What does that represent?
It is, here. There are the, it's like a scaled score that doesn't mean that much, except we're talking about where they come in compared to other students. So it's, we look at beginning of year, end of year. At this point, we only look at beginning of year compared to each other. When you get your own child's report, you can see that it's compared to grade level. So you might have a kindergartner, and you'll be told that they're reading at a second-grade level. But for this purpose, I was only comparing to the rest of the group.
And I'm just looking at the overall being 173.1 versus UPK being 174.9. Is only a 1.8 delta?
Yeah, the numbers are misleading in that when, you know, when I talk about a whole half of a year.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find.
It's only a few points. And, you know, you might remember from the assessment report, it's really hard to look at, MAPS are a predictive measure. So it's really hard to look at it the same way you look at statewide tests. So it's not a pass/fail kind of thing. It's about projected growth from where you start. And then they can also give you individual reports about where you're at in exile.
Yeah, it just, as I look at it statistically, a 1.8 delta on a base of 173 is almost insignificant.
Right. Except that each little part is actually worth a lot.
Okay.
Because it has to do with how much, like, everybody's growing. It's assumed that everybody's growing. And so they are projecting a certain amount, and then they show that, you know, if you can do more than what's projected, that's considered more significant. And again, in this case, we were only comparing exactly how they tested to another group.
Is the MAPS data subjective?
No, it's a computer-based test that self-corrects. It's been around at least 30 years, and is used nationally and in many districts. So it's as dependable as these things are, as long as, you know, students are actually doing it, trying to put the answer that they think is right.
Yeah, it's actually a diagnostic test that calibrates for each student as it goes along. So if a student gets an answer wrong, it repeats the question to know whether or not it was an anomaly that it got it wrong. If it gets it wrong again, it goes down, and then, you know, continues along with the student until the student maxes out. And on the flip side, if a student keeps getting answers right, the caliber of the questions becomes more complicated and...
I was just wondering if there's bias, you know, teacher knows that they went through UPK, so they give them a better...
No.
Also, until a few weeks ago, we hadn't decided that we were going to start measuring this. So certainly, nobody knew about that. And we're all grateful to have pre-K, so it's not like a controversial thing where people are pro or con about the program.
And even the kindergartners take it on the computer.
Yeah.
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 Aviva, just a comment. During my period on the board, we had discussed UPK several times. And each time, part of the discussion seemed to provide information. It says, UPK is great in the beginning. The students coming out of UPK show a noticeable, measurable difference the first year. But then, the self-levening concept of public education takes over, and by the end of the third year, the gap disappears. All the gains you made at the beginning disappear. These figures you're showing us here seem to prove the opposite, saying they've maintained the gap and continued to lead the way.
Well, this is only through second grade. So this is, you know, only a few years worth in our case. But there's lots of research, especially a lot of research has been done about Head Start nationally, since it started, people who want to take away that funding do studies, people who support it do studies. So you see it going both ways, both showing a lifelong impact and showing that it's only for a few years. So, you know, really, you can find research pro and con on that. You know, what we have certainly seen is that in terms of school readiness and the primary grades, it's making a difference.
But it continues through the years. It doesn't just evaporate by the time they're...
A lot of studies show that.
Yeah.
And then others show not that. You know, I think, you know, in general, what you see is, there's also studies that show negative, you know, not having early education and some negative impacts of that over time as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Aviva. You want to stay right up there?
Yeah. And so this was, one of your board goals was to have two reports on the integration of the New York State Learning Standards. And so this is the second one. So I really tried not to be repetitive here, and to really just bring you what happened since about mid-year. So it's a pleasure to talk to you about this. I have to say, you know, the directors helped really put together all of the things their department has been working on. And then they looked at it again with me and revised that with me. Okay. So this is the implementation timeline. This is really an awareness level. So what the State Ed Department has done is they said, you know, we saw how Common Core rolled out, we saw how well that went in New York, and we really want to slow down and give people time and not change tests based on things that teachers haven't seen yet. So this, you know, this is really a year of the standards being adopted and rolling out just to, you know, content directors and administrators and assistant superintendents and people like that, really learning about it. And next year is really an awareness year for staff. Again, the tests are not changing. The following year, you know, 1920, it's capacity building, and then the plan is in 2021, they'll be fully implemented. It can be a little confusing. The term next generation was used for science standards first, and now it's being used for ELA in math. So I think it's just easier to say New York State Learning Standards. And later in the presentation, you'll see there's new arts standards as well. And so here, this is spring of 2021, new tests, that the ELA and Math 3 through 8 tests will actually be different based on these New York State Learning Standards. Okay. So Kim Niesel and Jen Kreiser-Aimie put together a plan for next year. And I'll let you know how that's being shared out, for how we're going to start rolling out what's new in the standards. So what they've done is put together awareness sessions in ELA and Math. And they are going to be a choice for different times, before and after school for teachers. Again, this is just an awareness year. And then during one of the training days, if people have not gone to one of those, they're going to go to one of those and not have a choice. So everybody's going to have some awareness level, but they'll have more choices in the spring if they go to one of those. So that was sort of how we planned to roll it out, and also not be in a group of 300 people who might have questions. So we really wanted to parcel it out throughout the year. This information has all been sent out to all of the teaching staff. So along with all of our plans for professional learning next year. One of the goals of the district leadership team was to really let teachers know ahead of time, you know, what's coming? What are you planning for these days? And the teachers and administrators on the team put together, you know, really looking at the 4Cs, how do we make sure this happens? What about our mandatory trainings? And all of those things. So we actually put together a document, shared it with DLT, and then have since shared it with the whole, you know, all of the teachers and teaching assistants in the district. So they have a general sense of what is coming, including this information. I don't expect you to read this, but again, it was shared with everyone, and I can certainly share it with the board. These are just all the different trainings, and in fact, most of them are already scheduled. Okay. So these are new New York State Science Learning Standards, and they're not that new anymore, but the training has been rolling out. We do Science 21 for the elementary school, and that's, you know, a very experience-based, kit-based, you know, highly engaging elementary program. And so Science 21 is really on board with the new Science Learning Standards, and it includes training at the elementary level. And the training is like three full days per teacher. So it's pretty intensive. And to continue with the program, which we think has been highly successful, we have to do the training. So, you know, each year, we've been training one grade level so that we don't have too many teachers out. So in this coming year, second grade gets trained. And so again, that's ongoing. There's also been training for secondary staff in the standards, not through Science 21, and that's over the last two years, and they've done curriculum writing. So there's been a lot of work and training in getting us up to speed. You know, I'm certainly not the expert in this at all. One of the changes is it's more phenomenon-based. So it's more, it isn't always exciting things exploding, but the idea that they're really seeing a real, a science experience happen, participating in a real science experience. So not so much about, you know, just textbooks, or necessarily an old-fashioned experiment. That's about all I can say about that. We could certainly have Kim talk more about that, or any of our science teachers. You actually heard a lot at the last board meeting, I believe, about Debbie Furman and everything she's done, and the collaboration with IBM, which has just really grown. You heard about the Hour of Code. Dave Chikowsky and Maggie Schimmel-Fennig brought their computer programming students, and the IBM engineers taught coding to students through Raspberry Pi devices. North Park also did an Hour of Code. So there's just been a lot of great collaboration in this area. Okay. And we actually have an art and music teacher here, which is really nice. This was mandatory training that was rolling out this year, and every single teacher participated in the new standards. And, you know, I've had conversations with Melinda DiMaio, who's really embedded this work into all of the regular department meetings, into all the work, including curriculum writing that teachers are doing. And this is teachers working together. And I just wanted to publicly thank all of the academic directors. You know, they're a really incredible team that I'm very fortunate to work with, and they're making all of this possible so that, you know, teachers are getting the support that they need, and we're moving the district forward the way that we should. So any questions about that?
Do we have any questions, or are we...
Board Go Matt. I said Board Go Matt.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Aviva.
You're welcome.
Okay. At this time, may I have a motion for public participation, please?
Tomo, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pose. If anybody would like to address the board, now's your chance. Going, going. Okay. May I have a motion to close public participation, please?
Tomo, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Pose. Thank you. Let me just scroll down here. Board subcommittee reports. I think we... All right, we have the Audit Committee Recommendation Letter for Internal Auditor. Any other...
I'm not sure where you plan to talk about this, but we did have negotiations again last night. They were productive, which...
They were.
HPUE. There is going to be another session next week.
Next week.
And I'm on that committee and unavailable. So I wanted to talk about the possibility of having somebody else sit in for me.
Oh, I was going to do that in board discussion, but now's a good time because we're talking about it. Steve's correct in that at the next organizational meeting, we will repop ... Steve's correct in that at the next organizational meeting, we will repopulate the different committees. But we still have one more negotiating meeting. And if anybody is interested in doing it next year, this would be an excellent opportunity to sit in on one meeting and see what it's all about. So it happens to be next week at 4:00 here in the district office.
What day? Which day?
Which day?
Wednesday.
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 Wednesday, I'm sorry. I thought I said Wednesday. No?
You said next week at 4:00.
Next week at 4:00. Oh, well.
Every day.
Wednesday was in my head. It was there. I know it was there. Come on.
And a couple of things. It's an opportunity to look, and you don't have to commit, other than maybe staying till the, well, you could just come to one. But, you know, the hope would be that you'd stay on the negotiating team at least until that particular contract was settled. Also, there's no quota for subcommittee. So two people on a subcommittee is fine, too. So either way, we're fine. But if somebody wanted to come and sit.
I mean, I don't think you have to make a decision today, but if you could by Monday, give me or Rec Lloyd, who would kind of coordinate anything, a email if you want to come.
How late do you anticipate that we'll go?
We, let's see, yesterday, we did, what, two and a half hours?
Yep.
Yeah. So it was like 4:00 to 6:30. I think I got home at 7:00.
I have another meeting at 7:00. So I'd be willing to do it. I just have a board meeting in Red Hook.
Well, you could leave early. You could do it and then leave during one of the...
On the average, they've been averaging about, what, two and a half hours?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll plan to attend.
Okay. Thanks, Perry. Okay. Are there any other committee meetings?
I can report the, it's somewhat associated with Dutchess County School Board Association, but it was the, looking for the right term here. It was held at Dutchess County Boasies on May 22nd, and it was titled something like "The Future of Schools in 2030."
Oh, that's right. That's right.
Yeah, Bill Daggett. I know that, Gru, you've had the opportunity to hear Bill Daggett because he presented to the superintendent's group, right? I found him to be a dynamic speaker. And it was just a matter of coincidence that the following week, we, he was already arranged, he did, led a professional development in Red Hook for us as well.
Oh, cool.
And I made myself available to sit in on that. And it, a lot of what he says really supports our four Cs. I mean, he goes on, I think there's seven Cs or...
Yeah, some people go up to seven, yeah.
Yeah. But it really makes you stop and think. And some of the things that he said and some of the visuals that he provided were just eye-opening. You know, the way that we, you know, if you look at automobiles of the last 100 years, you look at jobs of the last 100 years, and you look at schools of the last 100 years, what still seems to be the same in certain ways? You know, it's scary. It's eye-opening. And when you think about, you know, he made a point of saying something to the extent of, you know, "We look for students to use technology and to be able to collaborate with their peers in everything they do. But yet, then we put them in a test situation, and we make sure that they're five feet away from any other person, and we take away all of their technology." It's like, you know, it's a little cliche in ways, but it also makes you stop and think of how are we really moving forward in education? And I'm not sure where to go with it, but it just, it's a bit inspiring to think that there's better ways out there. You know, it's one of those things that I guess that's part of what I cling on to, is that I see it happening, you see it, a little glimpse of it happening, you know, in classrooms that are really great, when you see students working together, you see teachers who are working with students, and it all clicks. But then you see so much of it, we're still trying to, you know, in so many ways, I feel like we're still trying to structure it the same way it's been done for the last 50 years. And, you know, just looking for opportunities to get more of that type of information.
Well, I'm so glad you said that, Perry.
Okay.
Well, actually, if you remember my last strategic planning update, and I showed the jobs of the future and even some of the salaries, but where the jobs were, what were the skills needed? And, you know, the skills of the old manufacturing jobs versus the skills of the new. So I started to investigate the organization that Bill Daggett heads, and that's the International Center for Leadership and Education, and they run a Model Schools Conference. And I had heard so many tangibles that you could look at. So it's one thing to talk about, you know, what's different, you know, the cars are all different, the computers, whatever, and the schools are the same. And that just seems like an enormous problem. But they run a conference on model schools, and so some of the presentations are schools that have been part of this International Center for Leadership Education. I'll give you one little example. One of the things that one of the schools looked at was, we always take, there's, we always take, the senior year is the lightest year, but it's also the time where you can take the most electives. And there was a school district that flipped the script and said, "We lose a lot of kids because in ninth grade, it's so prescribed, and they don't get any electives." And that's where they need to explore a little. They need to do some electives. And they said, "You should, and then you should flip the senior and junior year, the freshman and senior year. The freshmen should have opportunity for electives so that they can get their hands on some of these college and career things and find areas of interest and make the ninth grade more exploratory than, you know, and still have opportunities for seniors." And just some real tangible things that made sense. Talked about some interesting looping staff from eighth to ninth grade, so that they came up to the high school with a staff that understood who they were, and they didn't have that transition to make at that critical time period. So lots of hands-on. So Aviva and I are going down next week to the International Center for Leaders, it's ICLA. It's been a long day. So we're really excited about learning more about the organization, finding out how we can leverage the connections we make with some other school districts. I know Dover's going down. There's a few other school districts. And you brought, Red Hook brought Bill Daggett in, and I don't know if anyone's going. So we found, or I found, and Aviva's like, and she's like, "Ah, and you're there a little more than I am," but that, there was a perfect match between our strategic plan, as you just said, a perfect match between the four Cs and what, if you hear Bill once, but then if you look into the organization even further. So we're looking for it as a means to help us just grow into our strategic plan and come up with some real tangible ways to operationalize what, where it is that we're going that's going to be innovative and why, and be able to substantiate why we even take that leap of faith to do something that's a little more innovative than the 1950s structure that, you know, we're still kind of stuck with, so.
One of the things that caught me is, I mean, there's just certain things that I always thought, "Ah, you know, it's never going to change." But he gave examples of, you know what, everything. It is going to change. You know, like how we build houses is going to change. How our cars are serviced. I mean, giving, you know, the nanoscience. He's talking about the nanoscience and some of the elements of that and the impact that it had, you know, the potential of what nanoscience can be, or nanotechnology, you know, that things are going to change on automobiles, that we just won't need mechanics to work on cars the way we think of them now.
Houses being built by 3D printers.
Yeah, you know, but, you know, just so, to me, it was just very eye-opening, and it makes me think, we gotta, you gotta think beyond. I mean, it breaks down some of the paradigms that I had, and I thought I was being somewhat open-minded and...
Yeah.
Yeah. Lot there. I encourage anybody, Google it. You know, go on Google. There's some great YouTube videos out there of speeches that he's given.
Okay. Any other meetings? That brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
You got one? You got the second? Damn. Good damn. Any discussion on that, other than congratulations to the retirees that have...
Most of them were on before, right? Yeah, a couple on this one.
I had a couple of, you know, and I'm always looking for what's our maximum exposure.
Yeah, okay. There's one or two in there.
And there's a few out there that don't. And, you know, and I guess I just, there's, I'm going to assume that there's good reason why, like I'm going down through the Mid-Hudson Regional Hospital at Westchester, Therapeutic Horizons.
I believe one was due to state regulations.
If a reason was given, I did put it in the comment area for you. If a reason was given.
Okay. Where would it be? Oh, in the comment. Maybe I'm not looking in the right place, then. Am I missing, like, for Mid-Hudson Regional Hospital? Is there something there that I missed?
Well, that one says, "Services, school-based FM systems for the hearing impaired. The cap calculation sheet included $4,800." So that one had a cap. I'm trying to see if there's one that didn't have a cap.
There was a couple that didn't have a cap.
There were two that didn't have a cap.
They explained it.
And they explained why it didn't have a cap, yeah.
Because we don't know what the...
They don't know what students are going to need services at this point.
So it's not in the, it's in the administrative content in board docs. So you have to be logged in.
Are you...
I'm logged in. Okay.
Like, for example, 10.16, which is the char, char団? If you hit content there.
So it's a state-developed rate. And it says that right now, there's one student.
There's one.
Here.
There's my...
There's...
Oh. Okay. Okay. Perry, certainly, you can always come back.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm, if you look at the Mid-Hudson, you were talking about, the cap calculation sheet included.
I think it's at the bottom. It's the last page. Schedule A Services has all the prices.
Right, but there's no cap. That's my point, is it's going to, it's open-ended. There's no...
Yeah, we have to, well, it says here that $4,800 in the administrative content.
Right. But that's not what we're signing.
I spent a bunch of time in Portugal.
Well, it also has to do with what we, well, they're not allowed to do services and then bill us. We have to say we want this. So it has to be because it's required by a student, and it's something beyond what our speech pathologist can do. So we control it. And we could probably go back and put a cap on it that we know is safe.
Yeah.
You know, just so that you have that there.
To me, I would think that that would be just good practice, so that there's an up limit as to how, what our exposure or what we've expensed for it. That would be, I just think from a good practice, business practice.
Okay.
But what if you have a bunch of kids that need it and goes above the cap?
Then we can come back and discuss it again.
To the last kid, you say no?
No, we come back and discuss it again. You know, if we, you know, put, make the cap, you know, comfortably in excess of what we expect. And if you go beyond, you know, if you approach it, then come back and discuss it again. It just, my point is, putting something out there that says you're going to pay so much per day and not having any regulation of how many days you're doing it, to me, that's not physically sound, fiscally sound management. That's mine. But I'm good.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Brings us to Special Education, please, Miss. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Damn.
I've reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption as presented.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Hold on. Motion for 11.2, Special Education District Plan for the 2018-19 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
I talked to Aviva about the packet before the meeting, and she indicates that the majority of the changes are just adding some more definitions of terminology based on, we release, we vote on this plan every year, but this year, they've expanded to give us more definitions of what we're using in there. So we have less blank, beep-beep-beep, means. We've got the means in there, which I think is very helpful.
Yeah, there was a handful of most commonly-used terms defined from the regulation, but the decision that Heather and I made is that we should have all of the terms that are in the regulations in the document. We shouldn't pick and choose. What if someone says, "Well, you didn't tell us about due process rights," and that's the most important thing? So we would just want to have everything in there. So that's why it's now 40 pages.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
You're welcome.
Oppose? Thank you. Can I have a motion for 11.3 to abolish the Workers' Compensation Fund?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. I have a motion for 11.4 to abolish the 2013-2014 tax, or TURSHI, I never say, can say that word, the Reserve Fund for the tax...
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Can I have a motion for 11.5 for the Retirement Contribution Reserve Fund?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? Oppose? Nobody? Okay. And I have a motion for 11.6 to establish and fund the 2017-2018 Tax Reserve Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
Just a clarification. What we do is, we have several spans available, and the oldest one, every three years now is a four years, the orders recommend we terminate that one and then fund the coming year.
We're only allowed to keep a tax cert reserve for four years. So some school districts have one reserve, and then they reduce it by the amount that is for potential liability that's at least four years. We set it up so we have one reserve for every year. And every four years, we abolish the oldest one, return the money to the general fund, and then establish one for the new year. And we, our establishment is at 80% of our current claims for 2017-18.
Okay. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. And I have a motion for 11.7, the Reserve Funding.
So moved.
And, second. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. Now have a motion for 11.8, Fund Balance and Reserve Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
I would just say, this is one of the nicest documents I've seen to try to explain what those are.
What it is, yeah, yeah.
If we could explain everything that we do that clearly, that would be valuable. So kudos to whoever put the effort into that.
Thank you.
All in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
I watched. No.
Well, somebody had to.
Yes.
Have a motion for the bond for the capital project for 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?[1767.13] All in favor?
I have to roll call.
Oh, we have to roll call, sorry.
Sorry.
Usually, they put it in...
I don't know how to do that.
Oh, okay.
I tried to, but it was roll call. I just don't know how to make it come up.
Okay, you gonna call them off?
Um, sure.
Or you want me to call them?
You can call them.
I'll call. I'll just do it, not in alphabetical order.
Why not?
And I'm going to go with Mike first because he never gets to be first.
Yes.
That's some exhaustion. Perry?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Dave?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Perry?
Yay.
Mike? You know, Mike never gets to be first, though. I mean, you could have, you know, okay.
Put him in his place.
He went through school with Z on his name, you know. Have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract as listed in the...
Yes.
Second.
So moved.
We got to move in a second.
I got it.
Any discussion on that one?
Well deserved.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Well deserved, yeah. All in favor? opposed, nobody, okay. Can I have a motion for the Terms and Conditions of Employment for the Confidential and Managerial Employees?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor? opposed, thank you. And I have a motion for first consideration of the policies that are on the, let's let me get over there.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, this big list there.
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion on that one?
I would just say that the Policy Committee has been working very hard on all of these, and we still have a lot more work to do. So we're working really hard to straighten this out.
Okay, I'd like to actually add to that.
So join us.
It also helps that administrators make themselves available to review these policies and that our district clerk does a wonderful job of organizing the meetings and having the stuff ready for us to look at. So, all in favor? opposed, thank you. I bring us to the calendar for next year. Have, we realigned the calendar to face the new laws, or are we going to go...
But this is just our calendar.
This is, yeah. So at the last meeting, we adopted a calendar, knowing that state ed was still...
Well, it might affect this one.
Yeah. And we did receive word in between our last board meeting and this board meeting that they, they, they did uphold the recommended changes. So the calendar that you voted on last board meeting stays, and so this is aligned, so we're in good shape.
Okay. Any, any other questions on that?
Do we need a mo, have we done a motion?
No.
Oh, we haven't done a motion yet, sorry.
We were doing discussion, we haven't done a motion.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion now?
The only thing I would say is that this calendar does exactly what we did this year as well, and I didn't realize the impact, but the first Thursday of the month is the Dutchess County School Board Association meetings.
Mm-hmm.
So both May and June, we switch to the first Thursdays. And is there, and why did we do that?
Because of that, because of the 14, because of the vote?
In May, it's because of the vote and the timeline. We have to meet to do pre-vote documents.
Oh, right, exactly.
And that's June.
So that May 2nd is to meet the May 14th?
Vote deadline for certain documents, yes.
Okay.
And June is just because it's every other week and that's how it fell into place.
We don't have to do that in June.
What are the wagon wheels? No school students? Okay.
Right, that would be the last board meeting.
Next year, yeah, next June is a real odd. We're about as late as we can get.
It's after graduation, yeah.
Yeah.
What day is graduation going to be on?
The Friday again, the 21st.
21st.
Right?
No, no. It's a 20, because regents go until the Tuesday, right?
Oh, it's 28?
25th, so, yeah, it's graduation, if it's a, if it's a last Friday, it's the 29th.
Or 28.
28.
28, yeah.
So would you like to, is it possible to switch the meetings in June to be the 13th and the 27th, or is that not something that's appealing?
No, we could do that, there's no, no...
Is that what you, would help you?
Yeah, I mean, that, that would allow me to attend the meeting on the 6th.
Yeah, that's an easy change.
Assuming that you're a representative to that committee.
Assuming, well, or whoever the representative is. June is a particularly, it's the end-of-year meeting and it's valuable.
And 27.
The J have a special presentation.
Can I have an amendment to this, Dan?
I would amend, propose an amendment to keep the June 2019 meetings on Thursday, the 13th, and Thursday, the 27th.
Second.
And as far as May goes, you tell us, because you're working on the, oh, well, no, that doesn't work.
It doesn't work. If it's there in order to meet the voting...
I was trying to, I was trying to go to the 25th of April, but, but that, we already are meeting on that Tuesday.
Can't meet the timeline.
Oh, okay, it doesn't help.
Okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
All in favor of that amendment? Thank you. Now we have a vote on the amended calendar, please. All in favor? opposed, thank you. Okay. Let me close that. Well, can I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? opposed. Anybody that's still awake out there and wants to address the board? You want? Yeah, you're thinking about it, I can see it, you're thinking about it.
You thought about it, and it's definitely...
Don't make eye contact.
Okay.
And I have a motion to close public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? opposed. Anybody that's still awake out there and wants to address the board? You want? Yeah, you're thinking about it, I can see it, you're thinking about it. You thought about it, and it's definitely...
Don't make eye contact.
Okay. And I have a motion to close public participation, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion you got?
Second, bye.
Dan?
You pick.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor? opposed, thank you. There's no other matters now that we've discussed the negotiating thing, and there's no need for a second exec?
I wanted to say one thing that I forgot, Superintendent's report.
Which?
I forgot to say something in Superintendent's report.
Oh, you want to...
Yeah, so if we have one second.
Sure.
So Aviva and I attended what was a mandatory meeting this past week. It was from, it was a state education meeting. If you've been following it, No Child Left Behind is completely gone, and the Elementary and Secondary Schools Act is now in place. New York State had to submit an application to have their plan approved. They went through a whole process throughout the year to have a lot of buy-in. Their plan is approved, it's in the final stages. We were at a workshop, helped, actually, it was Irish Schwartz delivered the workshop over a day and a half. There must have been a couple hundred people in the room from the state. 164 slides. Not kidding. And he did them all, and then, and then the session was concluded by the commissioner, but we did sit through all 164 slides, and only Irish Schwartz could make it as palatable as possible with, you know, a little humor thrown in. So while the changes from No Child Left Behind to the New York State ESSA is the Elementary and Secondary Schools Act, so just get used instead of NCLB, now it's ESSA, are not, you know, huge. It changes every single reporting and accountability system and mechanism and calculation that we, that we do. So we will be sharing the Cliff Notes version with staff and administrators and certainly with the board, but it does go into effect this coming year. So there's a whole new rating system for school districts, there's a whole new accountability system, there's probably 125 different ways that we're being held accountable for every subgroup. So we will cull out the substantial changes that will affect us certainly in year one and year two, and we will be sharing that. So if you're reading, I know a lot of you do read your issues of On Board, and as you're reading articles about ESSA and all the changes, please know that Aviva and I are the first ones to go down for the training, and then we will start turnkey training as well as some of the other administrators, especially people who are in charge of ESL and ENL and things like that. So, yeah, I have never sat through 164 slides in my entire life, and it was mind-boggling, but we'll get there. So I just wanted to let you know, as you read those articles, that we are on top of it.
Okay, well, I would just say that it's encouraging to know that the state and the federal government, it's still a thing, they keep changing things, and expect things to get better while they keep changing them, so, all right. Well, thank you. I mean, it's good you didn't have that early in the meeting.
Yeah, it would have been depressing.
So at this time, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There you go, Steve.
Yeah. Wasn't me, that opportunity.
We got a second?
Second.
Oh, I thought we weren't going to get one. Any discussion on that?
We could have held them high.
All in favor?
Well...
Let's see if Steve would wait, if we asked that.
Opposed.
Yeah. That wasn't...